Good evening, it's now after 6:00 PM. So I will call this September 3rd, 2019, meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order. If you'd all rise please and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, the minutes, I think you picked up your packet earlier?
No, were they in class? Did you give them to me last week?
No, we didn't.
Yeah, you can take Jason's. Yeah, take Jason's packet. Yeah.
And I always want to give to my classes, or sign my papers.
Oh, okay. So you have them?
Yep.
So first order of business is approval of the minutes from the meetings held August 20th and August 27th, 2019. I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion made.
And I will second. All in favor? Next is approval of warrants. I'll entertain a motion to approve payroll warrant number five for $271,757.55, general fund warrant number 1010 for $96,485.22, and school warrant number 1011 for $228,776.76. Have to make that motion.
Motion made. To approve?
I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
And next order, real quickly, is an approval. It's old business. We need to approve the one-day pouring license for the fundraiser outdoor event at Stillhearts Cafe. We were only waiting for the sign-off from the police chief and the fire chief advising them of the event. And we now have that. Everything else is in order, so I'll entertain a motion to approve that.
Motion made.
And I will second. All in favor? Okay, next order is annual appointments. We've updated our annual appointment list. And... There were some changes to different commissions. Most notably, the 200th anniversary commission has been pared down to three individuals. They just have some money they want to spend and I think we'll do that for one more year and let them finish out. We still need a lot of volunteers for capital improvement planning committee. Right now, the only spot that's filled on that is the selectmen's representative. So if anybody's interested in capital planning, let us know. There's one vacancy on the conservation commission. We've established the downtown development committee, so that now appears on our list. And all those appointments are being made. Let's see, what else?
Finance has one.
Was it?
Finance.
Yeah, finance. I think it has a... Is that a...
Do they have an alternate?
Four, five. I think that's an alternate position that's vacant. If anybody's interested in finance committee, there's a spot there. Anything else we should know about? Any other?
Town Beach Committee.
Oh, Town Beach Committee. Yeah, we don't have anybody for Town Beach Committee. If anybody's interested in... We've spoken, I think at that last meeting where everybody was here, we spoke about maybe combining the Town Beach, Town Forest, Town Park, and the Playground Committee into one big recreation committee with a larger budget. Looks like we might have to consider that.
Did these people get back to you when you...
Most of them did.
Most of them did, and it's still...
Still some of them didn't. Everyone else got back to me.
Yeah.
Yeah. But we were late on these, so I think we need to appoint.
Still some interest in them.
Yeah, if anybody's interested... Oh, Town Hall Agent, that's vacant. I don't even know what that is.
I think I know one of those, but I didn't realize. I can check on the old West.
All right. Well, I will entertain a motion to approve these appointments.
Motion made to approve.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
And if you've been reappointed, you have to see the town clerk to be sworn in again. It's a yearly thing. All right, so...
So is that something Ashley has to let them know to be appointed again?
I think so.
Yeah, I have a letter I can send out.
Next on the agenda is Peter Peliquin, Hazard Mitigation.
Good evening. Just to go back to my name is Peter Peliquin. I'm the Associate Planner for Central Mass Regional Planning Commission. Just a little background on the planning commission, we're one of 13 planning agencies in the state. We represent the bottom two-thirds or the 40 southern two-third towns in North Brookfield. North Brookfield happens to be one of those, and we were awarded a grant to update 27 towns hazard mitigation plans. North Brookfield was one of the towns that was selected to get their plan updated. So, as you may recall, I was here back in May, gave a presentation about the plan. And tonight, I'm here to request that the board formally adopts it. I'll give you a little bit more background for those who weren't involved in the process. Hazard mitigation plan is essentially a plan that's an effort to reduce the loss of life, property, and lessen the impact of natural disasters throughout the entire town. It's not a disaster response plan.
Hold on a second. Hey Ray. Ray? You can take that outside if you would. All right, sorry.
It's okay. So the plan is not a disaster response plan. The plan is... Ideally, we're going to think about what is potentially going to happen, look back in history, what has happened, and see what we can do to lessen the impact of those disasters, not what are we going to do when the disaster happens? Not like the town sent plan. We went through, identified all the natural hazards that are seen throughout the town, the risks they pose to the residents, the infrastructure, property, natural resources, prioritize projects. Came up with a list of about 40-ish, give or take, projects, potential mitigation projects that we identified. At the core of the hazard mitigation plan is we're looking to break the cycle of a disaster comes through. We rebuild, but we don't rebuild to prevent the disaster from lessening the impact. Disaster happens again, now we have to rebuild. Or if we think of like the ice storm, you know? Ice takes down all the trees. If we don't trim those trees back, they're just going to grow back in. Ice storm's going to come back in 10, 15, 20 years, whatever the case may be, they same mess again. So we're looking to reduce those impacts. Like I was saying earlier, it's kind of a roadmap for achievable actions. And those are the strategies that we came up with, with the local North Brookfield team. The team was, consists of Ann Adams, the Chief Police, Chief of Fire, the Highway Department, Mr. Tripp, and there was a member from the Finance Committee, the Downtown Development Committee, who helped me try to figure out what is the impacts on the town locally? What have they locally identified things that we can help mitigate? Kind of the timeline, CMRBC spent about a year and a half collecting all kinds of data throughout the region. Started working on the draft plan back in December 18. That went through about May-ish of 2019, so about six-month process to write that plan. Came here, presented, sent that to MEMA. MEMA approved it. MEMA then sent it to FEMA. FEMA then approved it pending adoption. And that's why I'm here back tonight to seek the board's formal approval, or excuse me, formal adoption of the plan. And send it back to FEMA. FEMA will give it the final stamp of approval, and you'll have a working document up until September 2024. And just to highlight a few of those mitigation strategies I've talked about a few times or mentioned. We've looked at structure and infrastructure projects. One of the bigger ones that came up, which I think is far-reaching throughout the town, was to pursue funding for a comprehensive engineering study to locate, assess, and replace the culvert running through the town center. It's referred to me as the north-south common drain. Runs along the next one block over from here, along the park, under Vibram, near the fire station, I believe, and then back out onto 67. Another one was to pursue funding to integrate the heating system at the high school and upgrade the generator to support the facility as a shelter. Some preparedness, coordination, response actions where collaborate with stakeholders, develop local contract and slash contractor list for assistance with fuel supply, debris removals, et cetera. So once again, thinking ahead, what resources do we have in town to stay up and running for, say, 72, the FEMA recommended 72-hour period? So where are we getting our fuel? Where are we getting... How are we going to move the snow? How are we going to remove the debris, so on and so forth? Also want to pursue funding for increased fuel storage, DPW. Those tanks support the entire municipal fleet. So make sure that those tanks can support the municipal vehicles for 72 hours. Also want to continue educating the public about Code Red. I highly recommend that everyone in town signs up for Code Red. From my understanding, the town has acquired Code Red since we've started this.
We have, yeah.
Then in the local plans, kind of thinking further ahead, future developments. There was talks about creating a road bylaw that would ensure that new development could... Was built in such a way that it would handle emergency response vehicles, as well as have proper drainage and so forth for the infrastructure that's built when it's new, versus trying to replace after it's done. Want to think about incorporating disaster mitigation acts into all local plans. So master plan, open space plan, land use, transportation, complete streets. Even thinking about having a downtown development committee take a look at the plan, or at least reference them from time to time, see is there something we can incorporate from this plan into what we plan on doing in downtown? If we're going to have the sidewalks ripped up, how can we get some better drainage into those sidewalks? Things like that. And like I said earlier, we want to update the natural hazard mitigation plan on a five-year cycle. So this plan will expire in September 2024.
Any questions?
Do you have specific areas in... You know, we're going to okay the plan, but do you have specific areas that this is going to affect? Like you mentioned, the drain. They would talk about the Beaver Dams...
Right.
And flooding of roadways.
Correct.
Is that all in the plan?
That is all in the plan.
Specifics that we had mentioned throughout. I know there was a long list.
Right. So if you recall, we came up with a list of like 43, I want to say, if I remember correctly off the top of my head. I didn't think I would come here and go through the entire list with everybody tonight. So I just wanted to highlight a few, but...
Right.
Yes, you are 100% correct. We talked about Beaver Dams. We talked about culverts. I apologize for not knowing the names of the roads. That's where those two roads come together at 67, I believe it is, where there's a huge Beaver Dam.
Tucker is a brickyard.
Yeah, thank you.
Brickyard and 67, yep.
We also talked a lot about...
Tucker Road floods all the time.
Tucker Road, the road that's closed.
That's the one, yep.
Tucker Road.
Tucker Cross, yep.
I'm trying to remember them all.
There was, I just want to let people, it's not just what you have stated on here. It's, like you said, there was 30 or 40 different areas that we were going to address.
And it's on our page.
Yeah, I was going to say...
Is that list on there? Okay.
The website this morning. It's still up on the website.
Okay.
If anybody, any member of the communities around towns can feel free to take a look at that.
Yeah, and we'll leave it there. There's no plans to take it down, so...
Great.
Anybody who wants to see it. Sue?
I'm Secretary of the North Brookfield Emergency Management Group. And we meet next Tuesday night. I'm not inviting you next Tuesday, but it would be worthwhile to come to our group. We only have seven or eight people, so it's a very small group of people. And give us a talk on what we could do from what you have learned. And it's on that committee, in that committee too. So could I have your number before you leave, and then we'll invite you sometime on a Tuesday night?
Yes, I will give you my card before I leave. I'd be more than happy to come out.
Thanks.
Any other questions, comments? All right. With nothing further, I want to entertain a motion to formally adopt the hazard mitigation.
Motion made.
And I will second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yes, we did Stillhearts already. Hardwick Winery, one-day liquor, farmer's market liquor license. Anybody from Hardwick Winery here tonight? We're still waiting for some paperwork from them.
The insurance.
The insurance.
Yeah.
Yep. So we'll step that back.
What is that for? What are they doing?
They're doing it at the apple orchard.
Yeah, they want to sell bottles of wine at the apple orchard. They have to have a special.
They gave them stuff, like seven weeks. This is another one?
Yeah, we gave the apple orchard permission to do the pouring of some...
The wine from the Hardwick Winery.
Yeah.
But they don't have...
They need their own.
Well, they wanted to sell bottles.
If they want to sell bottles, they have to get a farmer's market permit.
Yeah.
Not poured, but a bottle.
All right, just to sell the bottles, so we're just waiting for their paperwork. So we'll step that back for the next meeting. Accept a donation from the Spencer Fire.
What do we get?
That's for the hazard mitigation thing.
Do you have this document here? Certificate of Adoption? Do you have an original of that?
It was just scanned to me.
Just this one?
Yeah.
Send that back to them. All right, so... Do you want to read the request from the Fire Department? There's an email here.
And then just pictures of the generators.
Yeah.
Some pictures.
Yeah, some pictures.
This is from Chief Holloway on Friday, August 30. Ashley, please have the Board of Selectmen accept this donation from the Spencer Fire Department for use on our new rescue vehicle, new rescue. This comes with a slide plate and is saving my budget approximately $3,000. This generator will be mounted in rear compartment of new rescue. Thank you. North Brookfield Fire Department, Chief Joe Holloway. So we get a new 5,000 watt, or 85,000 watt Honda generator with electric start for the new rescue vehicle.
Yeah, it looks like he provided dimensions to show us that it would actually...
26 inches, 20 feet, 20 inches wide, 20 inches high. And it was donated from the Spencer Fire Department.
All right. If there's no opposition, I would entertain a motion to accept the donation on behalf of the Fire Department.
Motion made. Please say.
I will second. All in favor?
They have pictures of it.
Is it brand new or...
It doesn't say. I'm not sure. But it was free.
And it's a Honda, so it's probably...
It's a Honda.
All right, what else do we got? That's it for agenda items.
Yeah, we just have a few chart of things and national grid power outage information.
Yep, so public comment period. Anybody?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the board. My name is Danielle Whitestone. I'm a resident of North Brookfield, and I live in the Chestnut Inn Mount Pleasant Street community. And it has come, unfortunately, somewhat through the rumor mill, which is one of the reasons I'm here to start addressing the concerns of the neighborhood, of some manner of transitional living facility that is proposed perhaps to be in our community. And since education or information wasn't publicly known, it was feared by the community, since this property was removed from the market as pending agreement and on-agreement, that somehow this was missed, and this was something that was going through without public form or public comment from the neighbors at large, which has set up panic in our neighborhoods. We don't have much information about what this planned facility was to be, who would be there, how many people were to be there. And this property has bought many houses with children, and is within less than a mile in the school. So this is my opportunity to start the discussion and just try to bring to light, as judicially appropriate for all the legal parties involved, to what is happening and just to make sure that the citizens of this, of the community at large, make sure that we know what's going on so that we can have our concerns appropriately addressed.
Okay, so you're miles ahead of me because I just heard about this today for the first time, so...
I think I can give some clarity to this.
From the planning perspective?
From the planning perspective.
Okay.
The church came to our last planning meeting and... Which church? What's the name of the church? Do you remember?
It's out of Berry, that's all I know.
All right. And they just simply were there questioning what has to happen if something like that were to take place? If they were able to buy a place for that purpose, what the protocol is in North Brookfield. The planning board explained to them that they would have to do things according to the building inspector's specifications for having events. Butters would have to be notified. They'd have to come before the planning board, before anything happens. So all they were doing was coming and just throwing that out there as a... We were thinking we might like to do that in North Brookfield. Nothing has been cast in stone. Our town building inspector spoke with them and told them that, you know, even if you did buy a place, you have to do this, 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 and this, and to a great cost. And they, you know, they were just merely asking. Nothing has been put in place. There are no plans to move forward. They weren't sure what property they were going to buy, if they bought one at all, to do this. So it's really in the, for lack of better phrasing, the embryonic stage. Nothing has taken place. Nothing is cast in stone on Mount Pleasant or anywhere in North Brookfield. It's something they would like to do, and they talked about possibly doing it in North Brookfield, but they also talked about possibly doing it in other towns. So, you know, you don't want to put the cart ahead of the horse here and put everybody in a panic mode. So there's, they've got a long way to go before they're going to get to any point where they could come forward to the town with plans and say, "We have this, and what are we going to do?" And wouldn't we have to approve it through the town? I know the planning board would have to approve, but don't you guys have to as well?
It all depends on the use...
What is the town meeting for?
If the use is not in the zoning, right now, in the zoning bylaw.
Right.
So North Brookfield adopted a standard in our zoning bylaw that says if the use is not specifically set out in a zone in the town, then it's not allowed in that zone.
Right.
As opposed to if it's not put in here, then it's allowed because we didn't address it.
Right. I mean, we have something about guest houses and other things, but we don't have anything specifically for that.
Right. So the planning board would have to determine that this use fit the boarding house use and that it was allowed in the zone that it's going into. So boarding houses aren't allowed in the R-30, but if this is in the R-30, then they wouldn't be allowed to do it. And that would be a planning board thing.
Yeah, we'd have to deal with that. The other thing too is that, you know, I saw your posting on Facebook. We communicated. I'm Susan Lyon.
Oh, hi Sue.
Hi.
Thank you. And my whole goal here is just to reduce the panic because I've had families come to me.
I think you're successful because it's not even at any point to even be concerned at this point. And I know that if it were to, you know, if they came to the planning board, I'm pretty sure it would be on the agenda, and I'm fairly certain that you guys would have the opportunity to come and voice your, you know, voice your opinions on what you thought. So don't worry about people pulling the wool over your eyes or trying to do something without you guys knowing. That's not going to happen. Our bylaws and the way we operate in North Brookfield is everything is very transparent, but you have to be proactive on your end and keep an eye on the agendas as well as go in the meetings, you know?
Absolutely.
I've learned the hard way, haven't I, Dale?
Oh, no.
Where you learn.
I should have learned this with my dad being on the Board of Selectmen for 20 years, and I think I was scarred from my childhood. I'm like, nope, it's time to start going!
I think I'm scarred from coming to select meetings.
No, but it's a one...
So don't worry about that yet, and, you know, just always, you know, always check in for, you know, what the agendas are because most of the agendas are posted and I think I think...
Read the window.
Yeah.
Read the window.
Yeah, read the window. That's what John always says.
Read the window.
It doesn't all...
It's possible for working people to come into town and read the window.
Pretty soon, we're going to have a reader sign down in the center of town, and they'll be posted on there.
Of the meetings and everything.
Well, whatever we can manage to put on there.
We've got to try to get a little more...
So we're trying.
Get a little more proactive in getting them on our website, so...
Absolutely.
Most everybody has access to the internet. So trying to get the different boards to post their agendas ahead of time and their minutes after they've been approved. So hopefully, that'll be a little more robust so people can see.
And to Sue Lyon's point, yes.
To say that, you know, I was talking, yeah, I saw the postings on Facebook. I hate Facebook.
I hate it too, but I'm like, oh gosh.
But anyway, I saw the postings on Facebook, and it was talking about drug addicts and this and that and the other thing. They were talking merrily about six women that are going, it was for women only, through a transitional phase where they're at a point where they're going to get up and go to work every day and just to have a roof over their head until they get on their feet. That's basically what they were trying to do. It wasn't any kind of, you know, you're going to have drug addicts hanging around in methadone clinics and all that stuff. None of that's going on.
One thing, and to reiterate what Sue said, coming to the meetings is going to be important in the next short period here, because if these people do get back on the agenda, they're going to have more information to put forth. The Select Board really won't get into it unless there's something planning needs...
Okay.
...to be clarified. But I'm on the planning board also, so I hear, heard the same thing Sue heard. We kind of referred her to John Kuchar, who was our building inspector. And he mentioned to them to have an architect look at the building before they decide anything.
To even purchase.
Because if the building cannot be brought up to the new codes, which I don't know what they are or why do, but he has to approve them between fire protection, alarm systems...
The amount of bathrooms.
Bathrooms, handicap accessibility. I mean, there's a list of things that these people are going to have to address for whatever building they buy, wherever it is, in whatever town. So John mentioned to them to get an architect first, to look at the building and see if it can be transformed into what they want to do with it before they do anything else.
Wonderful.
That's, well, that's the thing. And we're thankful that John was at the meeting because we really couldn't find anything that said yea or nay. So we were kind of at a, you know, whatever. But the butters will know because it has to be put to the butters. So if you get a letter, as in a butter, read the letter. It's going to tell you where and when to go to a meeting, and what's proposed, and how far along they've been. So you just kind of do your due diligence and, you know...
Wonderful.
The building may or may not conform, so...
Thank you.
And they may not even want to be in North Brookfield.
That's where they're at. You know, she's, the lady started out with some information, but it seemed to be her first one of these to open because we asked, are there any others we can look at? There aren't any that she's going to be running? She also mentioned that it wouldn't be staffed after 6:00 PM, which maybe it has to be, maybe it doesn't. We don't know. Because it all depends what the use is and what the staffing is. She said someone would be there from 6:00 to 6:00, 6:00 in the morning to 6:00 at night, but after that, the staff goes home, so...
Okay. I think this information helps all of us. There's seven of us on very short notice that have attended here tonight to voice our concerns, to learn if we could. We weren't sure if we had the opportunity to do that, and we are. And some of the things that have been mentioned are, those maybe alleviate some concerns, but also bring up some new concerns. And I think at large, thank you so much for the information in the forum because one of the concerns was that, given that this may not fall into an area that North Brookfield already has a specific bylaw for, that it may go through without... already has a by, a specific bylaw for, that it may go through without some manner of notice just because it falls in an area that it doesn't quite have a clear guideline on, and also the fact that the prop, we noticed the property was removed from market on April thirtieth, with knowing that there's something that was in the mix, it did set up quite, again, the panic in the neighborhood, which even though I reluctantly went to the Citizens for, well, I love the Citizens for Bed and Off Brookfield Facebook, bro, it's amazing, I love watching the horses and the cows, and I watch for lost dogs and cats all the time, they always end up in my yard. But, um, going to that, going to that and raising what could be a very touchy topic, trying to, coming at this with love and concern, I don't think there's any of us who don't have a loved one touched by addiction or some manner of transition or domestic violence. So just making sure that as a, that as a community, we're making edu, we're making educated decisions, especially since some of the butters have very young children, we didn't know what we were dealing with.
Yeah.
Um, thank you very much.
Well, I'm sure the Planning Board is gonna scrutinize and.
Okay.
Deal with whatever and, you know, uh, there's five of us on it with an alternate, we were all at the meeting.
Wonderful.
So go to the meetings and read the window and get.
I mean, the window.
Well, that's where you can always, it's always down there, it's not always on the.
Okay, now let's go, we can, can read the window.
We're getting better at, at posting, so.
But, uh, if you don't have Code Red, get it.
What is Code Red? I know it's, can I, I'm up here with this forum here, but it's like, can I, what is Code Red? Other than, I know it's like a drink from Mountain Dew, right?
Yeah. This is a, uh, the town of North Brookfield has an all-call information dissemination platform. It's called Code Red, many towns have it, and, um, if you're in the database that Code Red had for the town of North Brookfield, you should be receiving calls. I've put out four maybe already.
About four.
Um, and if you haven't received them, go onto the town website, there's a link right there, you click on the Code Red link and it asks you, uh, to put in your phone number. So, um, it doesn't do cell phones automatically, you have to put your cellphone in there, but if you do, it'll come to your cellphone. Um, and all you gotta do is go in there, so if you're not getting it to your home phone, go in, just click on the link, it's right on the first page that you come to, uh, northbrookfield.net, down at the bottom, click it, add the information, and you'll receive them. Um, I added my cellphone and I get my own notification.
Cool. All right, Code Red it is.
They're not even that annoying, are they?
No, that sounds, this, this sounds great.
So if there's a hearing or anything of that nature on this topic, uh, a Code Red will go out. If I know about it ahead of time or whoever the people are, we'll put it out so that, uh, and hopefully that sign will be up by the time.
It's ordered.
Okay. Great, I'll step aside and see if any, I don't know if any of these other folks, but that's your department in terms of next guest.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Sue?
Sue Lewandowski to Air Street. As someone who is a survivor of addiction as well as, um, domestic violence and sexual violence, I would like to be a part of the process of bringing someone, if it does come to fruition in this town. And also after January, if you want someone to help with the website, I'm already a manager of two of the sites on it, I will be more than help, happy to be involved with that as well.
Excellent, thank you. All right. I know. Anything else? You got anything?
No.
No? You do, but you don't wanna say.
I do, but I don't.
Uh, anybody? Good?
Well, uh, since we have an unusually lively group here this evening, I'd like to remind everybody of our, the existence of our museum, and we'll be open this Saturday, ten to one, and I'm working on four hours, and we should be open through December, but, uh, Saturday, ten to one, this, uh, Saturday will be.
Excellent. Yep, if you haven't seen it yet, um, try to make an effort, it's, um, quite a collection. Anybody else? Everybody good? All right, so, we have a couple of announcements on your charter lineup. Um, on or around August eighth, so it should have already happened, WBTS NBC changed its call sign to WYCN LD. Um, let's see, on or around July nineteenth, the NBA League Pass addition to Spectrum pay per view, uh, was added. I guess the League Pass is now not going to be launched until after August sixteenth, so if you're looking for the NBA League Pass, it's been delayed. Uh, and, let's see, there's a upcoming changes to the rates. Uh, current rate for spectrum receiver was a hundred and twenty-three dollars, and it's now gonna be a hundred and three, so there's a reduction in twenty dollars in that rate. Cable card was twenty-two dollars, it's now gonna be twenty dollars, so a two-dollar reduction in that rate. Uh, not exactly sure what those refer to, because it's not really explained, but, um, if it affects you, you've probably already noticed. All right, so now what do we got?
I didn't get that notice on my antenna, I don't know what's up.
Yeah. Um, so you wanna do the National Grid outage notification?
Uh, sure. The National Grid, uh, great news, National Grid can now send personalized power outage alerts by text, email, and phone calls. The system also allows residents to text National Grid to report outages or check on the progress of their restoration. National Grid can alert residents when we detect a power outage at the resident's property, we have estimates or updates on how long it will take for power to be restored, residents want weather warnings for the neighborhood. We have three ways to enroll. For a quick, easy way to enroll, simply text REG for register to six four seven four three. You should have your ten-digit National Grid electricity account number ready to register. Call one eight hundred three two two three two two three and let us know how you prefer to be contacted during storms and outages, and we will be in touch when necessary. If you already have an online account established with an EM address, email, and password, click on the green link in the infographic below to set your notification preferences.